That's because we have no place to go on that.
Are we ready? Okay.
Oh my gosh, we lost half our audience.
Yeah. Okay, I call this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education back into session.
I've never recalled it.
We are down to informational items and reports. We'll start with item 13.1.1, the annual financial audit. Kathy Danic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew. We have Mr. Tim Lenz and Jean Gerrots from Horizon. Each year, we are charged by the state through state statute that we have an annual audit of our general fund. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gerrots to talk about the news that was presented to the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you having us here again this evening. It's good to see you all, some of you for the first time, actually. So, as Ms. Danic said, the district is required every year to have an annual financial audit, and that is what we performed on the district's records. And it's our responsibility to audit the financial statements prepared by the district. And so, as part of that, you know, we perform a lot of different procedures, and there's a number of different reports that come out of that. The primary report is the opinion on the financial statements. And so, again, this year, as you've had in the past, is that our opinion is an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the district. We did not make any adjustments to the accounts in the reports, and we included an audit of all of funds excluding the ESU-18, which was audited this year by the State Auditor's Office, who they're going to present then later. So, the financial statements you have are presented on the modified cash basis of accounting. It includes a number of financial statements, a statement that includes the overall financial statements on a combined basis, and then each individual fund. Our opinion covers a variety of those looks or perspectives of the financial information that's included in there. But again, our report was unmodified, and I'll let Tim comment on the other reports that are issued in connection with the audit of the financial statements.
So, in addition to the opinion on the financial statements, we issued two other reports. One report is on the compliance and internal controls over the financial reporting of the district. Happy to report, again, this year that we did not identify any instances of noncompliance or any material weaknesses in internal control over those financial reporting matters. And in the second report, we also do an audit of the federal programs that the district receives and expends during the year. And every year, it goes through a selection criteria to determine which major programs will be tested. This year, the three major programs that we tested as part of our audit were the Child Nutrition Cluster, Head Start, and the Medical Assistance Program. And happy to also report that we did not identify any noncompliance with those material compliance requirements of those federal programs.
Yeah, included in your information with you, there's a separate letter that requires us to report additional information to the governing body. That's information is obviously important. It kind of overlooks of the audit responsibilities and key matters, but there's really nothing of significance or findings or matters to concern you there. There's one thing that we do assist, that is, we do assist with the preparation of financial statements, and that is a non-attest service meeting. We don't audit that, and so, it's just free information that we're engaged in the process of self-helping, preparing these financial statements, in addition to auditing them, just so you're disclosed that information, you know, how that works, that we work with your people and your team. So, in summary, we went through this in detail, much more detail, with Finance Committee, with Ms. Danic, Ms. Duncan, but we're glad to answer any questions or, you know, look at any of the reports that we've issued at this time with you as well. Questions?
Good job.
Must be pretty straightforward.
That's great.
Kathy?
Dr. Standish has some comments.
I just wanted to say a thank you both to our auditors and to the team that works closely with them. Jess Jefferson is not with us tonight. She's home with a new baby, and I don't think she's watching at this point because she's kind of in baby bliss, but she'll be joining us again soon, and she did an amazing job. It was just her second year doing this work, and she really did great work. She was assisted by Jill Polly, Kim Schmidt, Sherri Steiskalisis with all that. We have a great finance team, and an audit that verifies to the board that your financial statements are accurate and true is just a testament to that team. So, a huge thank you both to the team and to the internal team for all the work in preparing this audit.
Thanks, Liz. All right, seeing no other questions, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, next, reports from Board Committees. Matt, did you have a report you wanted to do?
Yes, I did. I am chairing a committee on committees, which is always a fun name of a committee to have. But one of the things we looked at and began addressing for the Committee on Committees is that currently, we have, you know, 11 or 12 different committees, about that many appointments as well. And so, just wanted to make sure, I'm trying to get my notes pulled up here, that we are, here we go. That just went faster than I was expecting. About that many mandatory appointments. As the Committee on Committees, we've agreed that our original intent probably wasn't to end up at the number of committees we currently have, but as we've gone throughout the years, they've just continually added. And so, part of our discussion in the Committee on Committees is trying to, one, make sure we get the right people in the right place for the right conversations. For example, transportation, being, transportation is highly connected to planning because planning has to do with setting boundaries and things like that for different districts. And so, potentially putting those two together makes a lot of sense. Americanism is a committee that we have, and we have to have, and we will continue to have, but it's highly connected to student learning. And so, there's some things like that where we have currently, in our committee structure, have separated things that are very closely related, and so, we've just been looking at some of those opportunities to potentially bring them back together and make sure that we have the right people and the right conversation, the right committee discussions. The second thing we've talked a little bit about is just making sure that we're talking about the right topics in those committee meetings. And so, we've begun doing some work on that. We're going to continue to work towards a recommendation that we hope will come out and hopefully be approved in advance of our organizational meeting after this spring's election. So, I will continue to seek feedback, and we'll meet with you guys as well, one-on-one, as we get a little bit closer to that. We'll be meeting again as the Committee on Committees sometime in February, so.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any other reports from committee chairs? Next, is there a report from the Career Academy, Lanny?
There are just a couple of events that I wanted to highlight tonight. You all should have an invitation to the Career Academy Partner Summit on Thursday, January 12th, which will be at the Career Academy. I'm sorry, it's, excuse me, it's register online by the 12th, and the event is on the 19th. Thanks, Kathy. If you showed up on the 12th, you'd be at a different event. So, this is the opportunity to look at first and second-year course highlights, and it's an opportunity for our business community to stay engaged at the Career Academy, and that's running from 10:30 to noon. The other events are information sessions for students and for parents, and that is on the 12th and the 17th at 7:00 in the evening at the Career Academy from 7:00 to 8:00. And this is an opportunity for current sophomores and juniors, that will be juniors and seniors next year, and their parents and families to learn about opportunities that are available for them at the Career Academy.
Thank you, Lanny. That brings us to the superintendents' update. Dr. Joel.
Just a couple of quick things. Legislation is really going to be the primary focus of our work, I'm sure, for the next few weeks and probably well into the session. A lot of ideas being bantered about, of course, that close to a billion-dollar deficit that, you know, we all have heard loudly and clearly, the state has to try to narrow that gap. And so, you know, we've had Mr. Neal and myself and Dr. Standish and others, we've already participated in a number of meetings, there's a number of groups that are working on alternatives, so it's going to be interesting and fairly intense to see how that all comes together in fairly short order. But this is going to be a legislative session unlike anything we've experienced probably in the last decade, maybe even longer, because there are a lot of different factors out there right now with regard to a state aid funding formula and distribution and statewide capacity and projections. So, I mean, there's just a lot of conversation. I know the school boards is very interested and paying attention, as is the Teachers' Association and Administrative Association as well, too. So, it's going to be dominating a lot of our conversation and certainly a lot of our work, and hopefully, we're able to create some solutions that don't take education back. And, you know, I think that has to be our focus, and we've got to be able to advocate and do a good job of advocating for the work that we're doing and making sure that, you know, our parents know the value of education in Lincoln and across the state of Nebraska. So, it's a bit concerning, and, you know, we're certainly looking forward to being part of the solution, whether or not, you know, we get that opportunity. I guess we'll be seeing in the next couple of weeks as bills are introduced. Martin Luther King Breakfast, always a fun event. I'm one of the speakers, so I know we have some board members that are going to be able to be there. That's on Friday. And other than that, it, you know, students are back, disappointed they didn't get a snow day, but I think the reality of it is they're ready to go, and second semester's off to a great start.
Thanks, Steve. All right, next, are there any questions for staff on the monthly financial report? Seeing none, that brings us to announcements of upcoming events for the board. Tomorrow is our GNSA Executive Legislative Council meeting at 9:00 a.m. in Capitol Room 1113. On Fridays, Dr. Joel mentioned, is the Martin Luther King Freedom Breakfast at 7:30 a.m. at the Embassy Suites. January 16th is no school at all levels. January 18th is our next GNSA meeting at 9:30 at the NCSA Building. January 24th is our next board meeting at 6:00 p.m. here at LPSDO.
Doug, can I add something?
Please.
On Monday, the 16th, we should note that it's also the MLK Youth Rally that is at the, both at the union, at the university, and then walking up to the Capitol, being intimately related, as in, my daughter is going to be there, and they've been working on this since October, the youth that has planned this. I think it's going to be quite something, and I just want to put a shout out there that instead of sleeping in, that would be a great thing to come and experience and see what other youth have to say about diversity and change in our lives. I started, I think it starts at 8:00 at the union, and then they start around 10:00 at the Capitol. Don't dress too warm. I did last year, and I thought I was going to faint in the Capitol afterwards, but, yeah.
All right, thank you. Next, that brings us to the point where we would, again, welcome public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, there is a request for a closed session for reasons number three, litigation, and number seven, legal advice. Is there a motion? Kathy?
Move approval to go into a closed session at the close of the ESU meeting for items three and seven.
Thank you. Is there a second, Annie?
A second then.
Discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danic?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes, and we will now recess to moving to the ESU-18 meeting. I call to order this meeting of the Board of Education of Educational Service Unit 18. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Ms. Byer is excused.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danic?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Here.
The Nebraska Opens Meeting Act is posted at the entrance to the room. We have one set of minutes for approval from our September 27th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes are approved as published. Our next item of business is the ESU-18 Annual Financial Audit. The LPS Finance Committee serves as the audit committee for the ESU, and so, I'll turn it over to the Chair of that committee, Kathy Danic.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Again, as state law dictates, we are audited each year. This year, the audit was a little different. It was done by the State Auditor's Office for the ESU, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Standish to introduce the people that came with the State Auditor's Office, because I didn't get them written down.
That's okay. I also want to just share that ESU-18 was selected for audit this year on a rotation basis. So, we received a letter last spring. Krista Davis is the lead auditor from the state, and I'll be coming up and co-presenting with them on a few items. And so, they sent us a letter saying we were selected to be audited, so that's why we have the two audit firms this year, one from the State Auditor for ESU-18 and then one from the school district. ESU-18 is a financial component unit of the school district, so we had to work through that as a team, as their audit is then a component of the overall audit firms. So, I'll turn it over to you to kind of brief, and then I'll join you up there, so we're not looking back and forth. If we're going through some.
Sounds, sounds good. Good evening.
Good evening.
We issued our audit report of the ESU-18 for the year-end August 31st, 2016, with an unmodified opinion, similar to that of the LPS District Audit. What we have within the audit report is the Independent Accountant Report. That's where you'll see the unmodified opinion. And then, there's also an Internal Control and Compliance Report towards the back of the report that lists the comments that we have within the audit report. Those are what I was going to go to, just kind of in brief summary. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me, and we can try and clarify anything that we had. The first of those comments and recommendations that we had was regarding a lack of internal controls.
Krista, just a second. The only one I've got is my draft from the Finance meeting. Do we not have copies for the rest of the board?
Should be attached. They might not be attached? Okay. They are on the State Auditor's website.
Can you get them a website or a web address so they can pull it up?
Yeah, so you said that, sorry, we should have had that attached for you.
And can we get that sent out to board members?
Yep.
So, what's your web address?
It should be, if you just, I don't know if you can just Google Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts, that should get you there. Is that going to come up on the screens, because then I can kind of point you to where you want to go? I don't know if that's going to come up or not.
Oh, is that possible? I'm being told we can get it up on the screen.
Oh, that'll help.
Please do.
Thanks, Doug.
Is it under APA or on the court's issue?
Yes.
It should be.
Nebraska State Auditor.
I was going to say, I don't type it in very often, so. You just see Nebraska State Auditor's office.
Yeah, if you go to the Nebraska State Auditor front, the page is right there, you just.
It's auditors.state.n e.us.
There we go. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Wasn't prepared with our web address.
Yep, and scroll down, about two-thirds down the page, November 30th, ESU number 18, that document right there.
There you go.
There you go. You know Stinkin' Piper?
Thank you.
Chromebook style. Sorry about that.
That's quite all right, for the benefit of the public.
Okay. So, I'll just start on page three of the report. I don't know if that is in the PDF there, but if you just scroll down a little bit further. You know where you're going. Okay, the first comment that we had was regarding lack of internal controls. We had a segregation of duties issues under expenditures, payroll, and receipts. The expenditures basically consisted of super-users within the accounting system, and payroll also had to do with restrictions within the current accounting system on being able to segregate those duties between different staff members. So, I know the district is working on a new system to try and address some of those concerns.
So, as we walk through, I can go ahead and share with you our response. As many of you know, we are on something called the AS400, which is a green screen environment, which is about 30 years old. The sophistication of role-based identity is not what you would see in a more contemporary system. So, we do have super-users. Super-users are not able to cut a check. We do have two check signers, but they would be able to initiate a direct deposit within the system. It is something we're looking at, is if we have to maintain all four super-users. We've had conversations that we believe we need at least two super-users, because you would want a sufficient backup, so that's a conversation we're currently having and taking a look at, but it's also something that would be mitigated greatly with a new, more contemporary, up-to-date system.
What is a super-user, and does it come with a cape?
It actually kind of does, because it's the very wonderful people in our school district that can make the whole system work. So, based on our system and the amount of customized coding and the fact that it's a little bit self-built, our super-users are the ones that can go in and make sure everything's working, which is why people like me want to make sure we have at least two of them so that we can keep everything working. So, a super-user is almost a self-designated term we've given to people that have fuller access in the system.
Thank you.
Okay, for the second issue that we noted, it was a contract issue. We tested one payment to a contractor. The contract was no longer on file, from what the ESU had told us, staff at the ESU, that that contract had gone with the district office fire, so that was no longer on file. So, we're just recommending that contracts be retained and on file for all current uses.
And this vendor was selected prior to the fire in 2011. We do have current, a purchase order specification, price code process for the storage that we buy, so we do have that documentation on record. It's actually just not the original where the vendor was selected.
Okay, and the last.
I'm sorry, any questions on that item?
Okay, the last issue that we had were just a couple payroll issues that we wanted to bring to your attention. One employee was overpaid due to the way the system recorded hours worked, and then another employee was paid a stipend that the board had not approved.
And the mitigating process that we put in place is we actually did create a process so that you can no longer clock and report time. It creates an error, so that's something that we put in place to protect that from happening in the future. And then, we also established, actually, prior to the audit in September, where HR is verifying payroll to make sure that it is an approved rate based on our current practice. So, when we walked through, worked with the auditors, we always welcome eyes on our books and our processes, and we embraced that and made improvements where we could and have things to look at in places where we can continue to approve, and some places were limited by our system.
Comments or questions from board members? Annie?
I just want to say thank you to both of our sets of accountants. Numbers not being my top strength, it is really good to hear these reports, and also, I think, would be good as the public, I mean, in the sense of like, when we look at these numbers, we can feel confident, I think we talked about it, I mean, that we are looking at solid numbers and the strong numbers and the right numbers. And it's also nice to know that, you know, our response is very quick and somewhat easy to do in all points. It's almost always just a, yes, that would be a great idea, and we do really need to do that. So, I really want to thank you just for the fact that it gives me a lot more confidence when I am, like, just perusing through, what are we paying to who and why? I can be a little bit more confident that it's really is more of a, just making, just seeing who's doing what for us versus how dare they, you know, charges that, you know, wow, that's way too much. So, thank you very much.
Kathy?
I think one of the other things that was really highlighted with this external audit from the State Auditor was that when you're using antiquated equipment and you can make it run and sing forever, sometimes it provides additional problems. And we keep putting money aside for this new computer system software that we just haven't been able to all get, all of it set aside and implemented yet. So, they're working through all of the issues, but whenever you hear that in budget that we need this going there, it's because the AS400 might run forever, but it brings with it a lot of issues that, as we get bigger and a lot more information, people expect more information now than they could get 30 years ago. So, I do think that is something that we need to consider, maybe in priority.
Doug?
I would say this is excellent feedback, and I'm very grateful for it. The other thing, then again, is kudos to staff for, oh my gosh, well, the great response, but also leveraging this system and some of the software that might be older than Matt. It's clear that we're going to have to be having conversations at some point as a board about upgrading the software and the system that we use to govern payroll. I think that this is a conversation that needs to come sooner rather than later. But again, all of that is, thank you very much for your work and for the excellent feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to add my thanks both to our staff and to the State Auditor's Office. This is a fresh look at our finances, and I think we've gotten some excellent suggestions out of this. For me, the big takeaways are that the ESU audit resulted in an unmodified opinion, and so, our statements accurately reflect the business that was conducted by the ESU. And I think when I look at the issues that were brought up, we do have antiquated software. We're well aware of that, and I think this is just another reason of many, many reasons to look into that system and to upgrading and getting a new system. Contract missing due to a fire. I guess a question that I would have for staff is if we would look going forward at maybe electronic backup of contracts so that there's something offsite? Is it, and that's something we're doing now?
Electronic contracting is absolutely part of our process. In fact, we laugh because Jill Polly won't carry around paper. She'll take it straight to the scanner, and she would prefer not have any paper anymore. So, definitely part of our process.
Fantastic, and.
It's true, once burned, twice shy.
Too soon.
Well, sorry, sir.
And that the payroll process has been adjusted with, in response to.
And that the, the payroll process has been adjusted to, with, in response to the feedback. So, again, I think this is a, another good example of how taking a good, close look at something can help us improve as a district. This brings us to public comment, and thank you again. Brings us to public comment. Is there anyone who would wish to speak in front of the board? It looks like Matt has.
I do have a little something just to mention, and I know I mentioned this when we met last summer, that we don't, we're not getting financial reports for the ESU. And I know I asked Dr. Standish about this as well when I met recently with you, and I just did a little digging, and we actually, we have in our policy 3500 for ESU that says that we will get those. And we, we do see but balance, fund balance amounts that happen for ESU in our LPS stuff, but we don't see budget versus actual. We only approve a budget, and then we see an audit. So, this is the, only the second time in a year that we, as an ESU, re, are, interact with our budget at all. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not ever on our agenda, so I feel like we just, we need to start doing that.
Dr. Standish, I saw your hand up.
On the monthly financial statement that's presented to the LPS board, and because typically, the ESU is a financial component unit technically of LPS, we have presented it to the board and not had a separate ESU meeting. On page two, about two-thirds of the way down, you receive a report of the ESU fund. It gives you the fund balance, the receipts, current and year-to-date for two years, the expenditures, and I'm just reading from the current report, current and year-to-date for two years, and then the fund balance. So, it is whole-scale, it's not a breakout, and staff would look at whatever the board asked us to look at as far as ESU financial reporting, but there are current year-to-date receipts and expenditures reported on monthly.
I just feel like, in general, and I know I mentioned this to both of you guys, as well as in, in the previous summer meeting, that, you know, that would be very typical to see when you're sitting on a board, a budget versus actual on the agenda for this board, and so, I feel like we really need to start doing that.
Don, is that a hand up, or is it, okay, that's just a pencil? Annie?
A nice pencil, too.
Just clarifying, you would like to do that within the ESU aspect?
Correct, correct, yep. But some sort of budget versus actual that shows. We, we've approved a budget. Where do we stand on that budget throughout the year when we meet? So, I feel like that would be very appropriate.
Other comments or questions there? I guess what I would like to see, I, I'd hate to see us convene an ESU meeting every month or even twice a month just for the sake of receiving a report when the same board could receive that report as part of our LPS meetings, but, and also, you mentioned our Policy 3500, and I guess since you're on the Policy Committee, and since the Chair of that committee is not here tonight, I would ask if you would take this item into the Policy Committee, both to see that the statements that are provided as part of our LPS meeting reflect the concerns that you have about the ESU finances, and then also that Policy 3500 be adjusted in any way that's necessary for us to be able to continue that current practice of bringing this to the ESU meeting.
Okay.
Or to the LPS meeting. All right. Is there anyone else who would wish to address the, yes, I'm seeing some hands?
Mr. Boswell, if I could just clarify, the one piece that would be missing from what's currently given would be the budget to actual. I ju, I just wanted to clarify so that if we need to mock something up, the budget to actual would be the one data set that would be missing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak to the Board of the ESU 18 tonight? I have no request for closed session for the ESU. However, the LPS board will go into closed session at the conclusion of this meeting.